Oh, I need to pull up the agenda. Study session. Put it over here. All right.
Oh, and Councilmember Davis is here. I'm bringing him over now.
Thank you.
And also, Councilmember Hamford.
Nice. So soon as Hamford pops in, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you. All right, Councilmember Hamford, you're in the panel.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right, it's seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening and welcome tonight to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular study session meeting for Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Ms. Wykoff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Foulter, Kenny, Hamford, Davis, Fisher, and Scarborough. And quick question, can you guys see my screen? Can you see the PowerPoint? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Wykoff, and please let the record show that Councilmember Gamble had mentioned at an earlier meeting that he would not be here this evening. So unless there's objection, we'll consider his absence as excused. Saying no objection, we'll go ahead and move on. The next item on the agenda is item 3.1. This is Pledge of Allegiance with Councilmember Scarborough. Councilmember Scarborough.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Scarborough. We're going to move into public comments now. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except in a quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If you're interested in speaking to the city council this evening and on the phone, please hit star nine to raise your hand. Otherwise, please click the raise hand icon that is in the middle of your screen. Please do so now if you'd like to speak to the council. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the council this evening? All right, saying no hands up. We'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That'll be council member reports, and we will begin with Councilmember Hamford. Councilmember Hamford.
Good evening. Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Scarborough.
Nothing to report tonight.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Foulter.
It's been a light week, so nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis.
I have nothing else. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kenny.
I just wanted to let the rest of the council know that Councilmember Fisher and I had kind of an onboarding meeting on Friday where we had a chance to meet everyone at the city, and it was really, really informative and time well spent, and I feel like I have a much better sense of what's going on and really prepared me to serve. So thanks to everyone at the city for putting that together for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Kenny. Councilmember Fisher.
So yes, as Councilmember Kenny just mentioned, it was an eight-hour day of meeting everybody and the directors of the departments. A huge help, and everybody that works there was absolutely amazing. So great attitudes, very knowledgeable about their positions, and helped me out a ton. So I really, really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. All right, next item on the agenda is item six, Mayor and Administrative Reports. City Administrators Report Extended Agenda, Ms. Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Looking forward to next week's regular business meeting. There will not be a P3 committee meeting. That's been canceled. The announcements and presentations, we have a proclamation for Black History Month. Under consent, we have accepting the Woods Creek Road Water Main Replacement Project and beginning the 45-day lean period. 2022 CIP Authorization and an agreement with My Only Kennel Animal Shelter, and then authorizing the mayor to sign the 2022 concessionary agreement and approval of the Transportation Improvement Plan. We will have a public hearing for an ordinance with astound broadband telecommunications. This will be a franchise agreement, and this is the first reading. And final action on the Connor Prezone. Under new business, we have the comprehensive plan consultant agreement and resolution setting a public hearing date for a right-of-way vacation for 171st First Avenue Southeast and an emergency ordinance for the food bank and a code amendment to accommodate some construction that the food bank is needing to do. Looking then forward into the study session for February 1st, we have a Public Safety Committee meeting, and we will be electing the chair and then taking a look at the 2022 work plan for the Public Safety Committee. Under council study session, we have a ownership transfer for the Monroe Youth Activities Building and Park Impact Fees. So that's it. Looking forward into the next two meetings for council's extended agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Does anybody have any questions about the extended agenda? All right, seeing that, we'll move on to 6.2 City Administrative Report, Ms. Knight.
Thank you. I am really pleased to let the city council know that the gateway signs, which we worked on back in 2019, are finally moving into the construction phase, and it looks like the installation will begin in mid-March. So we're very excited to finally get both the gateway and the wayfinding signs off the ground. For those that haven't seen them, I think the next slide shows a picture of that, but I will just give, oh, there they are. Thank you. Ms. Wykoff, I appreciate that. So if council remembers, this is the one that will be placed at the roundabout at State Route 522 and Main Street. So you can see the trees there behind it, but we are super pleased to finally be able to have these signs installed. So we'll be giving more updates to both council and community members as this goes along. For a legislative update, I wanted to let the council know that Parks Director Mike Farrell testified today in favor of House Bill 1025. This is the voter-approved 1/10th of 1% sales tax for parks, maintenance and operations. So we have been supporting this bill for a number of legislative sessions. It's being introduced by Representative Wicks, and Mr. Farrell reported today that Representative Wicks did a fabulous job of explaining the bill, and we're hopeful that it will move out of the House and into the Senate quickly. Also, I wanted to mention to the city council that the mayor and I had an opportunity to meet with Senator Brad Hawkins. He is the senator for the 12th Legislative District. That's the district that we're going to be a part of at, beginning in 2023. And we talked with Senator Hawkins about Senate Bill 5603. That's a bill that he is proposing that had a public hearing, and that is to support a plan to improve capacity along US2 between the city of Monroe and the city of Wenatchee. And I believe the mayor and his mayor's report is going to provide council with more information about that discussion, and that's it for my report today.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Knight? All right, so 6.4 Mayor's Report, just a couple items. I had a I had a pleasure of working with both councilmembers Kenny and Fisher on Friday, just giving them an introduction and then following up with them at the end of the day with the executive department and also just talking with them afterwards. I, some of the things that they said about the professionalism, the character of our staff, it made me really, it just highlighted things that I already knew, and at the same time, it's nice to hear that that other people are perceiving the same thing, that we have a very professional staff, very talented staff, people that are very humble and yet are able to, you know, are able to do the jobs that they do and do them very well, and all of that means a lot to me as a mayor and also as a resident here in our community, and so, you know, a big shout out, thank you to our staff for all the work that they did and providing those presentations, and I feel that in talking with Councilmember Fisher and Kenny that they are gonna really enjoy working with our staff and that our staff are really gonna enjoy working with them as well. So welcome, everybody, and thank you. And I had a great time also, meeting with Senator Hawkins from the 12th Legislative District. He will be our senator, as I understand it, for next year before he will be in a position of needing to run for reelection. I I had a sense that that's what I heard. But he seems like a really good person, a lot of experience working in the Senate. He seems to be a workhorse, which is what I like. I like working with people that like getting the job done and rolling their sleeves up. He, he seemed to have a keen interest in what's going on in Monroe and a lot of understanding about the Highway 2 corridor and just how it's important to get things done between 522 to Highway 2, all the way across to East Wenatchee. So he sponsored a bill, Senate Bill 5603, that seeks to put about 3/4 of a million dollars into the budget this year to do some study work and collect studies that have already been done along the Highway 2 corridor to help identify projects as part of a hopeful transportation bill in 2023. And so the Senate Transportation Committee was meeting last night about four o'clock until sometime after 6:00. The mayors of Goldbar, Leavenworth, Sultan, and I all provided testimony about the importance of in approving that bill and collecting those studies and doing whatever additional work so that we can make certain we can have some projects for Highway 2 in hopefully a 2023 transportation plan or budget. So I felt that the people that were present did a really good job of explaining the needs, and Senator Hawkins did a great job explaining to his colleagues what the needs were along Highway 2. Senator Levick also, who is our former sheriff in Stonemish County and former Snohomish County Executive, also did a great job in explaining what the needs were on Highway 2, and also asked a couple follow-up questions of Mayor Weadout of Sultan about impacts to Sultan as a result of how Highway 2 is. So and then Senator Leas also, he's the Transportation Committee Chair right now. He did a really good job of showing an understanding of the issues on Highway 2 and made some statements that were at least supportive of the understanding of the need for improvements along Highway 2. So it was a really great committee meeting last night. It was great hearing from everybody, and so that's, you know, I'm really thankful that Senator Hawkins brought this forward, and there's support from people that we know from Stonemish County. So anyway, does anybody have any questions about that at this time for me? All right, thank you very much, everybody. Where the Monroe this week is there? Oh, the YMCA did some work with tree planting for Martin Luther King Day yesterday, and unfortunately, because of me being exposed to COVID, I was not able to attend, was still in a five-day wait period for myself. And the, I am thankful for everybody that went out and did service projects yesterday on MLK Day. So thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item. It's discussion items. We're gonna start off with discussion item number 7.1. This is America Rescue Plan ARP Fund Distribution Update with Mr. Hebner. So we will bring Mr. Hebner forward.
Mayor, your Imagine Monroe item.
Oh, yes, I'm supposed to, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wykoff. All right, thank you. So I wasn't looking at the slide. Okay, part of what I've been doing with Imagine Monroe so that our boards and commissions are aware of Imagine Monroe and what we're looking for as part of the the next 30 or so years. I was going over Imagine Monroe, and Ms. Wykoff, do you have it that we can bring it up by chance? And I was reading this in the Community Human Services Advisory Board, and I got to the section where you have the word "with" in red, and I said, "We can find everything we need with regional connections and a variety of choices of work, housing, dining, shopping, arts, and activities." And I had somebody from the Community Human Services Advisory Board say, "You know, the way that it's written there, are you telling me that we have a variety of choices because of the regional connections?" And I I said, "No, I think the intent there is you're supposed to read the 'with' after the word 'and' also." And so just out of the abundance of clarity, I'm asking council if there's any opposition to just me amending this to add the word "with" right there so that it's not because of the regional connections. I can hop on 522 or Highway 2 and go to East Wenatchee or Bellevue for these things, but it's just a record, it's just identifying that we have regional connections and also we have here in our community choices. So any issues with me adding the word "with" there? Okay, saying no objections, I'll just consider it's okay to amend it with the word "with" because that's what I understood you wanted. Okay, perfect. All right, anything else that I missed, Ms. Wykoff or Ms. Knight? Okay, thank you. All right. 7.1, now we'll bring Mr. Hebner forward, and we'll take care of the America Rescue Plan ARP update, and thank you, everybody. Mr. Hebner, you're now on the panel. You have the con.
As soon as I turn on my video and microphone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you and good evening, council members. Before I dive into the report really quick, in your discussion before the meeting started, since Councilmember Foulter gave away my virtual meeting wardrobe secret, I'll tell Councilmember Kenny it's actually sweatpants down below the camera. With that, I would like to provide an update this evening for our council members on the status of our efforts to distribute first-round American Rescue Plan funds to the, to the community, and I'd like to do a quick update actually to the first part of the agenda bill, which shared with you that staff had recently attended a a webinar hosted by the Federal Treasury Department regarding their final rule for the use of, for the use of those funds. We attended that webinar last Monday, the 10th, and as a result of that, and I should say, when I say "we've attended," that was Finance Director Ms. Hassert and our finance manager, Mr. Pylund, and myself, the three of us participated in that webinar and kind of listening to some of the updates that they made in between the interim rule and the final rule, we started to realize that it sounds like there was some additional flexibility that the final rule was offering that we weren't anticipating. And so we've taken a look, reassessed all the proposed projects to determine which of those would fit under this additional flexibility. And what that really does is allow us to streamline the process for several, but unfortunately not all of our, of our awardees, but that has provided us as staff with some additional flexibility options for, for several of our recipients, and so that was a really great opportunity for us to sit in that webinar and still have the opportunity to update, update this process. The other thing I mentioned in the introduction of the agenda bill was that we had a contract template that was under the review by Mr. Lell at the time. He has completed his review. He had just a few comments back for Ms. Hassert, Mr. Pylund, and myself, and so I do believe that we will have a draft contract ready to start distributing here in the end of this week or early next. I do, Mr. Mayor, see a hand for Mr. Scarborough. I'd like to give him.
Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. Go ahead.
Yes, Rich, later in your presentation, will you ask people that extra scrutiny help and or how it helped them?
You know what I mean? I will, I will, Councilmember, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, so really quick, as I mentioned, Mr. Lell's completed his review of our draft contract, and we anticipate getting those out later this week, early next, and are hoping to be able to complete the contracting process by, by the end of the month. So as those contracts start getting signed, that's, that's at the point at which distributions can begin. A reminder for everyone, these awards will be handled on a reimbursement basis. So once the contracts have been signed for those awardees that have already completed some or all of their project, they will be able to invoice the city for reimbursement immediately. For those that have not completed any portion of their project yet, they will need to complete those, those portions of their, of their work and remit the payment for those expenses and then submit for reimbursement to the city. Mr. Pylund has done a really nice job of putting together a reimbursement request form that will provide all the city, will provide the city all of the information necessary to review those, those expenses and be able to issue those reimbursements. Our standard clause in the contract is that awardees will be able to invoice the city up to once a month for reimbursement. So they don't have to complete the entirety of the project before they can be reimbursed. They can, they can receive reimbursement from the city along the, along the way. So as we've looked at these projects, and as I mentioned earlier, we've done some additional review since last Monday. Part of the evaluation process, there has been a review of every application along the, along the way. And included in the agenda bill is attachment number two, which details all the expenditure categories that the Department of Treasury has, has told us can be our allowable uses of these funds. So the first step that Ms. Hassert, Mr. Pylund, and myself went through was to look at each application and assign them to an expenditure category. And what that really did was help us as staff to confirm that, yes, all these projects are allowed because they fit into one or more of these, of these categories. That also helped us determine what, what deliverables they would need, what evaluation process and what documentation we would need in order to confirm that their, their projects are being completed in the way that we, that we will be describing in the contracts with them. So this evaluation process has been ongoing. The second step of that process, along with determining their expenditure category, is to determine whether they are, whether they are assigned a designation of either a contractor or a sub-recipient. And the, Mr. Pylund has a really, really good definition for the differentiation between those two. A contractor is the final beneficiary of the funds that they are receiving from the city. So that's a business that is using their, or a recipient that is using their funds, just as a couple of examples, to pay back bills that they are outstanding on, to pay rent or utilities or something related to their, their operations. A sub-recipient is an agency that is passing through these funds that they receive from the city. They're further passing them on to others who will benefit. And generally, that involves that agency adding or creating some evaluation criteria of their own. So if they're a nonprofit agency, for example, that is providing mortgage assistance to residents of Monroe, they would likely be setting some criteria on income level or how far in arrears the recipients of those funds would be. So that's really the differentiation. If they're the final beneficiary, they're a contractor. If they are using those funds and passing them on further to, to recipients that they evaluate, they are a sub-recipient. This designation determines the specific requirements that both we as the city and them as the awardee are held to in terms of their process, their documentation, their records retention, and what they would need to provide during the auditing process. So future distributions, as I mentioned, we are hoping to finalize the contracts with our first-round awardees by the end of the month. That will allow us then to shift into our next round of distributions, what we'll be, of course, referring to as the second round, that will make an additional 1.3 million available to begin the distribution process in February, on February 15th. We plan to open the application cycle at that time, have it open for approximately 60 days for applicants to apply for funds, and then we'll be going through a similar review and evaluation and recommendation process at that time. So to Councilmember Scarborough's question a bit ago about how that, that additional flexibility benefits, benefits the, the recipient, there is an opportunity within this, within this, this additional flexibility, Councilmember, what it really did was open up some additional expenditure categories that we weren't necessarily anticipating with the terms of the, of the interim final rule, and it also, it also allowed for, it also allowed for, my apologies, had a brain, had a brain freeze all of a sudden. It really would allow, looking at my notes on my other screen, I apologize. So as we reassessed all proposed projects to determine which would fit under that additional flexibility, it really streamlines, it really streamlines the process and, and what are, there are less requirements and procedural hurdles that some of our, some of our recipients will be needing to, needing to go through, and that, that really will apply to, as I spoke earlier, the contractors, the businesses that are using the funds to directly benefit their, their business operations that have been impacted by COVID. The streamlined process will really make it easier for us in terms of our, our review and what we will be requiring of them in order to issue, issue payments. So once we get that contract in place within the next two weeks, we're really hopeful then to be able to start distributing the funds to those businesses that have already incurred their expenses as quickly as possible. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report. I'm absolutely happy to take any additional questions the council may have.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Hebner. I appreciate the report and all the work you're doing. Are there any questions for Mr. Hebner or any thoughts? Go ahead, Councilmember Kenny.
Thank you, Rich. I just had one question, and forgive me if this has already been decided prior to me taking office, but I was looking at the different awards, and I was wondering if you could tell me what expenditure category relocation of a business might fall under. I noticed for Northwest Taekwondo, there was $27,000 allocated for relocation to a new site in Monroe. And again, forgive me if this is something that's already been decided, and it's not something that we even need to discuss. I was just curious.
Not a problem, Councilmember. I'll just take a second to find the document that we have been sharing amongst ourselves, the team, myself, Mr. Pylund, and Ms. Hassert. While I'm doing that really quick, I would really like to give a, I've mentioned them a few times. I would really like to give a shout out to Ms. Hassert and Mr. Pylund in our finance department. They have been absolutely a huge support and resource throughout this, this process. We've been able to really bounce ideas and different interpretations of guidelines that we've read off each other, and I feel that we've really been able to put together a very strong process that we'll be able to use in the subsequent rounds as a result of that, of that collaboration. Also, Councilmember, to your, to your question, we have not shared with council prior to this meeting, so we have not, we have not shared those expenditure category assignments. So this was not a, not anything that had been previously decided, so not a problem. Oh, as I look at, as I look at the spreadsheet, and I'll give a little bit of additional information about that applicant itself as well, Councilmember. We've assigned them to category 2.9, which is Small Business Economic Assistance. The, the main reason that that application was well-received by the review committees was that the, the applicant was located in a, in a business space here in the, in Monroe that was that was an older structure, and there were some safety concerns ongoing for a business that was very oriented in the, in the athletic and fitness field. And so as their lease was coming, as their lease was coming to an end, their landlord let them know that, you know, we're not going to be able to extend, to extend your, your lease. And so it was, it was a situation of not, not just being a business owner looking to And so it was it was a situation of not not just being a business owner looking to relocate for for their own for their own volition, but really needing to out of necessity. And our review committees really wanted to support an established local business, be able to find a new space and continue to to be able to function in the community.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions, Councilmember Hanford? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just appreciate staff, all the work that you've done putting into this and quite a but and so it's wonderful to have the advantage of having a lot of money to flow through into our community, but it comes with a greater responsibility. So we really appreciate all that you've done so far and are going to continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, didn't mean to speak over you.
That's fine. Thank you, Councilmember Hanford. Anything else for Mr. Heebner or Mr. Clark?
I would just add, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, really quick to Councilmember Hanford's point. The the CARES Act funds last year, it was really one that we were encouraged to distribute the funds as quickly as possible, which we we did and got them out into the community. As Councilmember Hanford in mentioned in his comment, there are, as as I've I've shared this evening, a lot of additional steps and and hurdles that we're needing to we're needing to to clear with these with these ARP funds. And and I know I speak on behalf of Mr. Pylund and Ms. Hasser when I I say just thank you to council for for your support in this in this process. And it is, it's it's been a significantly bigger lift, but one that has been has been great to to share with on behalf of myself with a few with a few extra very capable hands. So it is, it's a pleasure from us as as staff to be able to do this work. And Councilmember Hanford, thank you for that recognition.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from councilmembers or questions? All right, great. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And that item would be item 7.2, OPMA and PRA overview with Ms. Wykoff. Ms. Wykoff.
I remember to unmute myself and got to pull up a different screen really quick so I can see. Your face is over there. It's all it, you know, it's you have to magically move everybody around. Me, Mayor and Council, Jody Wykoff, City Clerk for the record. I am here this evening to talk about a couple of things, the first one being OPMA and PRA. That's what we finally call them, also known as the Open Public Meetings Act and Public Records Act. Many of you have probably already seen this and looking at the attendees list, many of our attendees have already seen this. So I will try to make this painless as much as I can and we'll go through it as fast as we can. So there is this wonderful thing called the Open Government Trainings Act, which requires certain trainings for members of the governing body. For those of you on council, you're required to take this training 90 days after taking your seat and every four years thereafter. So jumping right into the Public Records Act, I'm not going to read this verbatim, but just highlighting the red font for you, full access to information concerning the conduct of government on every level. What is a record? A record is basically pretty much everything that you can imagine. And it's definitely not just the written word. It is videos, it is audio recordings, chats, all of that kind of little stuff. One thing that we always say in the public records world is that before you hit send on that email or that text or that social media post, ask yourself the question, are you comfortable? Am I comfortable with what I'm about to send being on the front page of a newspaper with my name attached? Because as we all know, that has happened and will continue to happen. We do not have to keep everything, thankfully. We have these wonderful things called the Local Government Retention Schedules and records nerds like myself love this because this helps us determine what we can keep, what we don't have to keep, how long we have to keep it for, and what we do with it once it's met its retention. That many of the items that you will be dealing with are considered transitory records. Those are records that you don't have to keep after its usefulness to you has has come and gone. Here's a brief list of some of those items, notes, talking points, notifications, FYIs on on server updates, that kind of stuff. And then we have a couple other examples of transitory versus non-transitory. So you can send an email or a text message to someone saying, I sent you an email or it was nice to see you last week, but you can't say something like, it was nice to see you last week where we decided to appoint Tom to the XYZ Board. Anything that kind of gets into the city business is no longer non-trans or no longer transitory. Here's another, just a different way of looking at the list of what is considered transitory and what is not. These, again, to-do lists, secondary copies, items that become a printed and signed paper record. Moving on to this one. The the phrase that I like to say is if in doubt, don't throw it out. Contact myself or Sherry Simonson, our Public Records Officer, and we will help guide you on whether or not it is a transitory record that can be removed or, excuse me, deleted. One thing I will say, you you're probably already aware that the city has received a fairly large public records request that is very broad. And we're asking all of staff, boards and commissions and council to retain anything and everything that has to do with the city until we can kind of wrap our heads around this and find out exactly what it is that we need you to to get to us. So just hold on to everything for for a moment in time and we'll let you know when when you can start deleting stuff again. Text messages are indeed a public record if done within the scope of your employment. Within scope of the employment is when your job requires it, your employer directs it or furthers your employee's interest. And in your case, your quote unquote employer is the city. And let's, oh, I had one little, sorry, I'm going to go back one because I had a note on here that just because there is something personal within emails or text string that is related to the city, if there's a, you know, if you're having a conversation with it, a council member, a fellow council member, and you happen to start talking about something personal and that record ends up becoming responsive to a records request. We're not allowed to necessarily redact that personal information that's in the middle of that string because the rest of it is responsive. So just, again, keep that in the back of your mind whenever you're getting ready to hit send on that email or that text or that social media post. This, we we do recommend that council try and stay clear from posting on the city's Facebook page. I do understand that some council members may have council Facebook posts or Facebook pages, and that's fine. Those records are public and they are public record as well and and disclosable in in a public records request. If you do choose to post something on another site and you're you're giving your own personal opinion, we strongly recommend that you start your comment by stating that this is your personal opinion and not your opinion as a council member or a city representative, that you are not representing the city or the council in this foregoing message. Helpful tips regarding the PRA. Contact again, contact myself or the Public Records Officer to make transfer arrangements for records that need to be retained. Any record existing at the time the city receives a public records request must be disclosed regardless of the retention value. So those post-it notes that you would normally throw away if they are responsive to a specific request, they are no longer allowed to be just tossed. They have to be disclosed. And if you do receive a request for records, immediately forward that to myself or the Public Records Officer. There is actually some case law right now that I believe is in the appeal process, basically stating that you do not have to submit a request to a certain person or using a certain form. You can request a record of any city employee or elected official. So if you do get something and somebody says, I want a copy of the blank, 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 please get that forwarded to us so we can get it logged and responded to. Because if you don't, there are violation penalties. City of Monroe is is on this list, as you can see. This is just a small sampling of of the updates that we get when we go to litigation or yeah, litigation updates from for public records that these are some of the fines that you'll see. So before I move on to OPMA, I just wanted to pause and see if anybody had any questions regarding the Public Records Act. I know most of you have seen all this before, so.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions? All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to the OPMA, Open Public Meetings Act. I'm not going to read all of these to you, but in a nutshell, the public has a right to know what the government is is doing at all times and what kind of actions they're taking. What is considered a meeting under the OPMA? It's it occurs when there's a majority of the governing body and where action is taken. As you know, a majority of the governing body is considered is called a quorum. And there can be situations which a gathering of less than a majority can constitute a meeting, which I will get to in just a moment. Three important rules, they all meetings must be open and all persons permitted to attend except very small exemptions, no secret ballots, and any ordinances or resolutions or other decisions that council makes in a non-OPMA meeting would be considered void. What does taking action mean under the OPMA? It pretty much means anything. It includes discussion, actual action, taking public testimony, deliberate deliberations and discussions, basically the same thing and not includes but not limited to final action is is kind of the premise we're trying to get there. Committee meetings can be subject to the OPMA if a majority of council members participate with the intent of transacting council business or the committee was created by the council and the committee conducts a hearing or takes public testimony or acts on behalf of the council. Electronic communications, this is where we start talking about serial meetings. You want to be really careful about phone calls, text messages, chats, emails, anything like that where you are going to be exchanging commentary with a majority of council. One of the big tips is do not use reply all. Oftentimes, you will see that when I send you an email to council, I'm actually sending it to myself. And then I put all of the council members' names in the blind carbon copy area of the email, and that helps you so that if you do accidentally hit reply all, you're still only replying to me. So examples of serial meetings would be if Councilmember Scarborough calls Councilmember Kenny, they talk about a topic. And then Councilmember Kenny sends an email to Councilmember Fulter and says, well, I talked to Councilmember Scarborough. He says this, I think that, what do you think? And then Councilmember Fulter posts something to social media saying, hey, you know, three of us think this. You know, what do you think? You know, that you get the picture. You want to be really careful about those serial meetings that you're not accidentally polling your your fellow council members through email or having a discussion about something that you're going to be taking action on. So I spoke about the exemptions to OPMA. As you are very aware, you have your executive sessions. They are limited in scope on what can be discussed in executive session. You also have your closed session, which is related to collective bargaining. And just, this is kind of a reminder to you, what happens in executive session stays in executive session. In the in the in-person meeting world, it's kind of easier to manage who is around you and who can hear you speaking on the topic because you are usually in a closed room where the public has left the the room or you have gone into another room. In the virtual world, we can't control each person's environment. So we remind you and strongly suggest that you either wear headphones where somebody in your home cannot hear what's going on or that you make sure that the room that you are in is not being shared with anybody else who can overhear the conversation. Also violations for OPMA. $500 personal fine for the first violation for each person who violates OPMA and then up to 1,000 for each subsequent violation. And then again, attorney's fees and any action you take is considered void or invalid. Open Government Trainings Act does have the required training that I mentioned earlier on. These are all of the bodies that must take that, including yourself. And I'm asking everyone to take the training this year, even if you took it recently. If you've taken it within the last three months, if you could please forward me your completed certificate, I can log that and that would count. If you haven't taken it in the last three months, I would, I'm asking everyone to just take it over, start fresh. I'm a new clerk. We have new council members. I just kind of want a new slate for this. You can get that. You can either print and sign it and get it to me. You can print it and scan it to me as long as I can see it and file it. That would that works. While I was putting this slide together, our attorney asked me to take to mention quickly regarding municipal ethics. You guys just went through a quasi judicial process not too long ago, so you're familiar with the appearance of fairness doctrine. That does only really come into play when it is a quasi judicial process. The other under item under municipal ethics is that double dealing is the phrase that we were using, and this is voting to approve contracts in which you would have a financial interest. We also had something similar, you know, that was affected by this not that long ago as well, if you recall. If you ever think there is a potential conflict of interest on a particular item, let us know. And as far in advance as you possibly can, so we can get with the attorney and confirm, you know, work through the process and confirm if you have to recuse yourself. With that in mind, I will be asking council to forward me a list of all of their business or nonprofit interests so that we can just have that as staff and know ahead of the game that we're going to be talking about, you know, this particular contract. We might need to talk to council member so and so to verify if there's going to be a conflict of interest. That is it on the OPMA and PRA overview. Mayor, I'm available to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Wykoff. Does anybody have any questions? All right. And as noted by Ms. Wykoff, there are a couple of hyperlinks that you should click on and go complete that more detailed training and then print out a copy of the certificate, sign it and get those to Ms. Wykoff. All right. If anybody needs any help with with completing that, please reach out to her directly. All right. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, that's 7.3. Council council meeting basics and protocols. Ms. Wykoff, go ahead. Council council meeting basics and protocols, Ms. Wykoff, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't normally speak this much during council meetings, so hold on a moment. And so this discussion. There's a few topics that I'll kind of start with and then after that. Open it up and and have council discuss their own council meetings. And these are your meetings and you get to decide how you. Want to have them flow. So let me pull up. Have a document. Mayor, did you want me to share my screen with this document or just kind of?
I think share the screen because I know that you made some revisions if if that's what you have planned.
Let me just pull it over really quick and make it bigger for everybody. Can you guys see that?
Yeah, can you put it to a screen width on your display?
Maybe. What button do I push?
View, drop down menu view. And there should be something that allows you to go out.
Nope.
There we go. Thank you. Moving back over to this screen.
Okay. So just real briefly. I'm sorry, I'm going to be looking at my screen over here. Real briefly, you have your business meetings, your study sessions and your special meetings. Business meetings are for your action. Study sessions are traditionally your discussions. There's usually no action taken during a study session unless you waive your own rules to take action. And special meetings. They do require advanced notice and you're only allowed to discuss and take action on items that are actually listed on the agenda. So for announcing absences. You all are really good about during the extended agenda process, just saying, you know, I'm going to be late that meeting or I'm not going to be there that meeting. That is a fine way to do it. And then if you miss that opportunity, we ask that you email myself. Ms. Knight and Mayor Thomas to let us know that you're going to be absent on certain meetings. And if you know well in advance that you have a vacation plan, please feel free to let me know. I just go ahead and jot it down on my. Extended agenda anyway, so that that would work as well. So what to do when you would like to speak? So you will notify the chair or the mayor that you would like to speak by raising your virtual hands. As you may or may not realize, when you raise your virtual hand, your your picture physically. Gets moved into a different spot on the mayor's screen, so it's easier for him to recognize you. And. Let's see. Oh, pressing the button on your microphone when you're in person, I have not witnessed this, but I hear it's a thing, so. That also puts your name towards the top of the mayor's list on his screen to let him know when you've been. When you've said that you want to. Make a comment. Let's see, the mayor will first call on those with raised hands and then may open the floor for others before going back to someone who has already spoken. As much as possible, one question or comment per speaker at a time with related follow-up questions or comments allowed. This is outlined in section six of your rules of procedure, which basically say that we will follow. Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order state that no one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. So this is one of those items that we don't. We don't follow Robert's rules to the T. We do allow some flexibility with council comments and questions.
So council, I'm going to, Ms. Wykoff, I'm going to go ahead and interrupt briefly. So as we're going through these council members, if you have any questions that come up, please let me know. As Ms. Wykoff just noted there, we do adopt Robert's Rules of Order and Robert's rules is it's pretty thick. So I I know that Ms. Wykoff pulled the pulled the book out earlier tonight, it looked like it was about. Probably about two inches thick. Are you pulling it out? There you go. So that's Robert's Rules of Order. I've I've looked at them from time to time in another capacity and there's a lot there, so we use it as a guide. So as we're going through some of these. So as we're going through some of these. Like I'll let you speak more than a couple of times, but. When, you know, if you've had your hand up and then it goes down, someone else speaks, you put your hand up. Another person then speaks after you, and then you put your hand up and then. Somebody puts their hand up behind you, especially somebody that I haven't heard from yet. A lot of times I'll take that person that I haven't heard from. Rather than taking the next person in line just because I haven't heard from person C all night, but I've heard from person A multiple times and. Person B and D once or twice, so just just letting you know that that's kind of how we manage that. We haven't had any real issues to my knowledge. On this, but but again, please chime in if you have any questions or concerns. And I'm going to go ahead and acknowledge councilmember Hanford, councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah. I just wanted to say I I feel like you do a pretty good job. Mayor of acknowledging each person. Letting them share once before going back to someone else. So that we're getting the full discussion of the council. And so I appreciate that because. There have been times when lights have gone or hands are raised or whatever and. And I'm looking forward to hearing other opinions before I hear want to hear back from the same person, so. And I. And because of that, I try not to raise my hand right away. And give others a chance to chime in and because we really do want to hear. Opinions and thoughts from everyone, so. That's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanford. Anybody else on on this point or anything else that Ms. Wykoff has gone through before before she continues? All right, please continue, Ms. Wykoff, and I'll go ahead and lower councilmember Hanford's hand.
Thank you, Mayor. Technically, questions of staff or others are to be directed through the chair slash mayor. In Monroe, council can ask staff directly and staff may seek acknowledgement from the mayor before responding. Alternatively, you may direct questions of staff to the mayor such as, Mayor, would Ms. Smith be able to explain X, Y, Z about one, two, three? Staff and presenter should direct questions and responses to the mayor. In other words, return the meeting to the mayor once they have completed their presentation. For example, Mayor, that completes my presentation, I'm now available for questions. Additionally, if the presenter wants to bring someone else forward to provide information or answer questions, they should ask the mayor if that is okay. Mayor Mr. Flintstone is available to answer questions with your permission. I'd like to bring them forward. What to do when you do have the floor? When you have the floor, you're able to ask questions, comment on the topic being discussed and or make a motion. One tip, keep comments or questions to the topic at hand. We also don't yield to another person, so if someone would like to speak while you have the floor, they can raise their hand. And if you have a question for other council members, they can answer when they're acknowledged to speak. Motion language. We encourage you to use the phrase I move to or I move that council approves. Not I make a motion. For seconding the motion, we recommend, especially in the virtual world, that you state your last name after seconding. So it would be. I second the motion, councilmember Foulter. Or I count, I I second the motion, Hanford. Something along those lines, because for those of us trying to take notes. Or trying to keep track, when multiple people say. I second. There's, you know, you're not sure, you just kind of try and figure out whose voice was the loudest.
Let me go ahead and break in here too. So I I understand that because of how we do our our motions. A lot of times you'll have one person that will do the the first motion. And I know that councilmember Hanford has been doing that in the last couple of meetings, I've noticed he's done quite a few of them where. You've got the really long thing and I move to and it's like this really long paragraph. I'm working with staff to try to shrink that, but that creates. That creates just a complication where sometimes other people don't want to make the motion. When it become, when it comes to the second, a lot of it's not uncommon to have three or four of you second, I mean, right away. And it would be helpful if you just said, like, you know, if councilmember Foulter were seconding, just say Foulter seconds. Like that, you know, if if your voice sounds similar to somebody else's, I'm going to hear your name. But then even with that, just recognize if councilmember Foulter has been seconding all night. And all of a sudden, councilmember Davis seconds at about the same time. I might go ahead and take councilmember Davis because I like to share the second. Because again, you're you're a lot of times you're right at the wire saying it at the same time and. It's nice to to share the second with folks, so just just letting folks know that. There's no real science to that, and then I'll always call out who I think is seconded the motion and. Again, having your name there will will help, so whether it's. I second Foulter or just Foulter seconds. Hearing your name there will will help will help me identify that. Any questions or thoughts on that? All right, thank you, Ms. Wykoff, please continue.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Voting language, so. If you haven't figured out yet, yays and nays and ayes are kind of old English that we don't use a whole lot anymore. Except when we're voting, so some options to consider. If you are in favor or approving a motion to say yes or I approve. Or if you're in opposition or to deny that, to say no or I oppose. We don't, if we continue to use I, which is totally acceptable. We don't like using nay because I and a can sound too similar. And then, of course, I forgot to mention that we also have roll call votes and when we do that. You know, I would go by each council member and then you would say yes or no, or I approve or I oppose. We'll probably need to settle on one at some point so that it's not, you know, everybody's saying a different word. So the mayor usually will kind of guide you on what he wants you to say. In the affirmative or the opposition, so just kind of follow his lead until we. Figure out what is the best route for us.
And so that, and then I'm going to call on councilmember Hanford, thank you, Ms. Wykoff. Where where we're going with this is is trying to update the language and so that when we do have attendees in the audience that. When when they hear a motion is made and and I say all all of, you know. All in favor or all approving say yes. We're using language that people understand a little bit better than all in favor say I. There may there there may come a time or we, there may be a time now where. Somebody listening in the audience might hear all in favor say I and not recognize because they don't use the word I all the time. They don't use the word in favor, they don't recognize that that means that it got approved. And so it's just, it's just an attempt to modernize the language to be more consistent with what people hear today. So that's that's the thought around that and. Yeah, so thoughts, go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor, for explaining that. And I I understand. What you're saying there. My. My opinion is that it's been working great. Ever since I've been on council. Where we say all in favor say I. And those that vote say I. All opposed. Say I. You don't think you actually say all opposed say I, you just say opposed. And we know to say I, so. To me, there hasn't been any confusion at all. And it's it's pretty apparent, it's been apparent. When people vote in in opposition. Because they're the ones talking, so. That's my opinion. I'd love to hear other council members too.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Foulter, go ahead.
I'm kind of looking forward to some changes. I don't think that that's how we've been doing it all along, is reason enough to keep doing something. I do think that it leaves a little more clarity to do the actual pronunciation of yes and no and approve and deny. And it'll take a little practice, but I am looking forward to saying Foulter seconds. Because I think that that will provide a lot of clarity. I know so many times. There's, there's a crowd of us yelling out second and, you know, good luck for you to try to pick one, so. Sometimes you pick one that wasn't even in the mix, you know, so. Anyway, I am looking forward to these changes. Just a note while I have the floor. We have been saying I and nay and abstain. And I would like us to talk about removing abstain. If you are abstaining from a vote, you should have already said why you're not voting on something. I think that abstaining from something is not doing your job, you're actually hired to make the vote. So if we could get some discussion going on the taking abstain out of the options, I would appreciate it. But I think that's all I got to say on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Foulter. So we've got two topics there, if it's okay with you, council. We could address the all in favor or all approving say I or say yes and all opposing or all denying. Say no or say nay, if we could finish up that conversation and then discuss the abstain item that councilmember Foulter. Brought up, I'd appreciate that. Councilmember Scarborough on the in favor opposition.
Yeah, I. I'll go with whatever you want to do, Mayor. I I kind of agree with councilman Hanford, we haven't had a problem with it. Until last week, I think, and then somebody didn't really. A lot of us didn't know why the change, so. We didn't kind of push back with eyes and not eyes, but. We can, I think we can do that however you want, but I. I kind of agree with councilman Hanford, it hadn't been a problem in the past, so. Whatever you want.
All right, thank you. Other thoughts from other council members on the I, yes, no, nay? Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
There, caught myself. I'm with the if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I'm also a bit of a traditionalist, I like saying I. So I. I don't see, I don't see a need to change it. I don't see that it's been a problem or anything else. And and. And yeah, and going along with the second, I can I can adjust to that. I don't think that's ever been a problem either. I don't think everybody said, hey, I was first. You know, there's been several ties and it was like, okay. So. Anyways, I'd rather stick with the I. Even when we're voting no, we vote I because you asked specifically all of all those that are in favor and then all those opposed. And when I say I. That's yes, I'm opposed or yes, I'm in favor, so I don't think there's, I don't think there's any. Confusion there, so. I'm with sticking with the same old system.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmembers. Councilmembers Kenny or Fisher? Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, I'm okay with yes or no. Yes or no is completely okay. Common language when somebody asks me a question. On the streets or in my family, I, my wife asked me a question, I don't say I. It's it's usually yes, but yes or no works works well for me.
Okay, Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Kenny.
I don't have a strong feeling either way, to be honest with you. I'm used to saying I in my other boards and commissions. And I I feel that I will go with what the majority would like to do in this case. I really like the idea of attaching a name to a second, we go through this at the Historical Society Board meetings as well. And I'm going to take some of this back to that group because that's a really great idea. So I I really like that idea, but I I'm just going to go with the flow here and. I am, I'm good either way.
All right, so councilmember Kenny, right now you would be determining whether there would be a a tie in that majority or not. So do you have a, do you have a preference on yes, I, no, nay?
I I like the I, just because I'm used to it. It's just kind of what I've always done over the years, so I'm more comfortable with it.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, everybody. Go ahead and council, councilmember Hanford.
Thank you. In regards to councilmember Foulter's idea, I would definitely support her in. In that quest to get rid of the abstaining. And. In that, uh, quest to get rid of the abstaining and, uh. I wholeheartedly agree. So, thank you.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, councilmember Scarborough.
Yeah, are we on to the abstaining, uh, issue? Are you going to do them separately?
Uh, we, we are now on to the question of abstaining. Uh, councilmember Hanford, um, went ahead and, uh, made that change for us. So thank you.
Okay. Well, I want to point out that, uh, a few years ago, we went from not having abstaining. To having a discussion of why we would have abstaining in there. And there was a reason and there are. Or I have seen in the past, there have been, uh, issues where abstaining was appropriate. So I'd like to see it stay.
Okay, thank you. Other councilmembers? All right, I'll go ahead and call on you, councilmember Fisher. Thoughts on, uh, abstaining?
Yes, I was just going to raise my hand, thank you, Mayor. Um, I am all for getting rid of abstaining. Um, I agree with councilmember Foltzer. I think we're here to make decisions, yes or no, whether they're difficult or not. And I think, uh, we don't need to be abstaining, you need to make a decision.
All right, thank you, councilmember Kenny.
I agree. I'm all for getting rid of that.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, councilmember Davis, did you speak to this?
Oh, I didn't, but, um.
You spoke, go ahead.
Um. If I'm going to abstain from a vote, it it's, and and I haven't in over ten years, so, um. I'm going to let you know. One or another, I'm going to speak out about it and you're going to know that I'm abstaining. So I don't, I don't know, it doesn't. I don't see the need to ask if anybody abstains. I would, I would hope that anybody else, if they were going to abstain from a vote, would make that. If not the why, the the knowledge that they are abstaining to be. You know, unquestionable. So I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of the abstain. Uh, part, I think that can be dropped.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, councilmember Scarborough.
There we go. Then I, what I understand Ed to say is, and it sounds like what, uh. Ms. Foltzer wants is if you are in the negative on a subject. You need to express your negativity to that subject and you won't be voting for that, uh. Particular subject instead of just saying I abstain. Is that what we're looking at?
Um, oh, councilmember, so councilmember Scarborough, anything further?
Nope.
Okay, councilmember Foltzer, go ahead.
To address councilmember Scarborough, if you're in the negative for something, you would vote no, not nay. Um, and if you are in the positive for something, you would vote, uh, yes. If you are unable to vote for it for some reason, you need to make that distinction clear ahead of the vote. If you have some kind of. Clash with, uh, like, you don't think you should be voting on it. There's any kind, any kind of question whether you should be voting on this thing. That needs to be made ahead of time. That point needs to be made ahead of time and you remove yourself from the vote before that ever happens.
So, uh, that would be akin to a recusal then. Is that correct, Ms. Wykoff? So what you would do, councilmember Scarborough is, um, before the vote occurs or preferably before the item is introduced and staff discusses it. That you would announce that you're recusing yourself from the vote. And you would be explaining why, um, kind of like we do when there's a conflict of interest or appearance of fairness issue. Um. And, uh, other than that, if you chose not to vote and we're not, uh, in the room at the time, then your vote would not be counted. So, um, I think that that's, uh, what I'm hearing is that, uh, the majority of the councilmembers present this evening. Would like to hear a yes or a no, uh, an affirmative or a negative, or that you've recused yourself from the matter, uh, removed yourself from the room ahead of time. Okay, um, anything further on the topic?
Hands, hands still up, Mayor.
Your hands still up?
Yep.
Okay, it's not on my side. Go for it.
Okay. Then I, here's my question. What you're, what you're suggesting is. Is that if I think there is a subject that I don't need to vote or should not vote on. That I have recused myself on, then I am no longer allowed to enter into the discussion. About the subject. Is that what I'm hearing? Because that was the reason that we talked about the, the recusal. Or the, uh, the abstaining probably in the first place is allowing everybody to hear the subject. Make their comments on the subject. And then if they feel like they should recuse themselves. If you want to allow them to recuse themselves after the subject has been talked about. That's, I understand that. But if you're asking that anybody that wants to recuse themselves from the subject vote. Also recuse themselves from the discussion, I don't agree with that.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm hearing is that, that you refuse yourself. If you are unable to vote on the matter. Otherwise, the expectation is that if you're in the room when the vote is called, that you vote either a yes or a no.
Well, I'm asking you, if if you're in the room for the discussion, does that mean you're in the room for the vote? Or can you, after the discussion, recuse from the vote instead of abstaining during the vote?
Councilmember, I'm understanding that, uh, at the time of the vote, you will have a choice of approve. Um, yes, or or, uh, I and, uh, oppose, um. Uh, you know, to vote no and that the word, the question of abstention would be removed from the vote. And so, councilmember, if you are not in the room when the vote is called, then your vote will not be counted as either a yes or a no.
No, my question is, you're telling me if I'm recusing myself from a subject, I cannot be in the room. For the discussion either.
That is correct. That is correct. If you refuse yourself for cause, yes.
Hence the reason for abstaining. Being in the room for the discussion, making your points clear. And then if you feel like you should not vote yes or no, then you can re, uh, abstain. That would be my way to do it.
Okay, rather than walk out of the room.
Yes, because I might want to give, I might want to put into the discussion my feelings. And understand I could say at that time, I won't be voting on this, but these are my thoughts on the, this. On the subject, because after all, some of those subjects are the reasons we were voted into office.
All right. Thank you, councilmember Scarborough. Is your hand down?
I think so.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm putting, thank you. Thank you. Your head's down now. Yes, sir. All right. Councilmember Davis, go ahead. Councilmember Davis, you're on mute.
Too much back and forth there. Um, I think ninety-nine point nine nine percent of the time, it's you're going to be voting yes. Or you're going to be voting no. There's a rare occasion that you might want to abstain from a vote. I'm not. Not going to argue that point. Um, but what I'm saying is. It's just, it it's easier, it's more streamlined, where it it flows better. Voting those in favor, but I, those opposed, no. And in that rare case, when there's an, uh, abstain, somebody's going to want to be known that they're abstaining. Because they don't want to be counted as a yay. Because if, if you don't, if unless you're. Counting people or having them raise their hand, you just don't know specifically how many people are are voting, uh, you know. So you want to be counted as a, an abstention. And so, um. You're going to announce that either before the the vote or after the vote. And that's what I would do and and. I wouldn't want my, I wouldn't want to be counted as a a yay if I'm not voting yay. So, uh. It's for me, it's just, uh, it, it's just. Sort of a streamlined thing to say those in, uh, in favor, those opposed. And if you are in abstaining, then make your, make yourself known, um, and be a part of the vote, but. Uh, don't be bo, uh, don't be counted as a yes, don't be counted as a no, be counted as as an abstain. Um, and in that rare, rare, rare moment where you might be doing that, then just speak up and do it. For the rest of the time, it just seems, it's always seemed awkward. And it hasn't, in it, you know, it hasn't always flowed well and and it's been forgotten on numerous occasions, you know, uh, the abstain part, so. Um, you know, just, I I'm just saying for streamlined. Will you stay with yay or or not and nay? And, uh, uh, if you abstain, then just speak up and abstain. And be counted as an abstention. So, that's it.
Okay, so councilmember Davis, what I'm understanding from you is that somebody could still abstain. They would just announce it before the vote.
Before or after, they're just, you're going to be counted as an abstention, not as a a yes and not as a no.
Okay, so, so what we would be doing is I would be doing all in favor, all opposed. I would not need to ask the question of abstentions anymore. And it would be, if I don't hear you, then you will fall with the majority of votes as I understand them to be.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
I just, just, uh, Kirk, I just wanted to, to. I just wanted to let you know. And it was from the councilmember Foltzer stated earlier, the councilmember just didn't want to. Make their decision for what we were voting on. And so that's why I think most of us. Have expressed now that we don't feel that we need to have the mayor say abstentions. Because we're there to vote in favor of or opposed of. And, uh, in. In some councils, that hasn't happened that I'm aware of since I've been on council. But in some bodies that are voting, councilmember Scarborough, if if someone wants to purposefully abstain. Uh, they'll, they'll walk out, that'll be the time they need to use the restroom all of a sudden, when the vote's being taken. And so then they're just not counted because they weren't in the room. Uh, and so that's, if I remember correctly, that's kind of why this whole. Thing came about was because we didn't want to have someone have to get up to go to the bathroom to abstain or something. Anyway, I'm glad that everybody's in favor, or most of us are in favor of just getting rid of that. I hope that helps, uh, you understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I've just been sitting here thinking about clarity and, um. Trying to promote understanding and clarity with folks that are coming. To our meetings, uh, people that are coming to our meetings, um, listening in, trying to make sense of what we're doing and understanding. And, um, I would like to sort of change what I said earlier. I do think that a yes or a no is much more clear. To, uh, people that might be joining us, um, they might be confused by the I. Um, I think that yes and no is much clearer and more understandable to. People who are attending our meetings. And so I would like to change my opinion. And say that I do think it would be better in terms of clarity and language and. Just making, uh, our meetings and what we do transparent and understandable to a greater number of people in our community. Um, and for that reason, I I would like to support the going to the yes and the no.
All right. Thank you, councilmember Kenny. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Okay, back to the, back to the abstention. I'm not for the abstention for the purpose. Of not wanting to vote yes or no, so people in the public have me down as going left or right or. Ahead or back or yes or no. My abstention use would be. That I probably shouldn't vote on it because there could be a conflict of interest. And therefore, if you go back too well, if it's a conflict of interest. You shouldn't be listening to the subject. That's where I disagree. I feel like I have the right to listen to the subject. I have a right to make comments about the subject. If before the subject comes to a vote. People would like to know that I will be recusing myself from the vote. I'll be glad to do it that way, but the purpose of the abstention was not because. I didn't want to vote or make a decision to vote like I was hired to do. It's because I don't think I should vote on the subject. That's my clarification. And I think Ed kind of said it. Um, but I'm not sure it was, uh, read back in 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 exactly that way. So you tell me.
All right, um, so the, the. Where we're going to go, I think, with this discussion and Jody still has, I'm sorry, Ms. Wykoff still has more to go through in her, in her presentation materials, I think. Is that I I think that it would be good to have our Legislative Committee review the proposed. Uh, our existing rules of procedure and see where, what we can do to, to streamline the rules of procedure. And I think that this is a topic that, uh, that they should take up and discuss. Um, the question that, uh, councilmember Scarborough brings up about recusal. My understanding was that if you're going to recuse yourself from a topic, you do it at the beginning. You can listen to what's going on, but you can't be in the room, uh, if we're in the physical space. And, uh, therefore, um. Like that, you can't make comments on something where there's, uh, some sort of a financial other connection to, to yourself. So that's, that's my understanding of that. And certainly the committee or staff can drill down more on that, uh, following up with our attorneys. Uh, if necessary. So, um, my thoughts are that, uh, that this discussion we're having right here. Could go to the Legislative Committee for, uh, further discussion and a recommendation as far as, uh. Uh, having, uh, suggested revisions to the rules of procedure brought to the council. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I'm in full support of what you just said. I would say, uh, it would be good for. Unless Jody wants to address it right now, it'd be good for Zach to address how that works when we recuse ourselves. Uh, because it's, it is, I I understand your frustration, councilmember Scarborough, but it's not our. It's nothing that we as a council can choose, like, okay, we'll let you in for the discussion, but then you have to leave for the vote. There's specific legal reasons and and, uh, protocol that we have to follow. It's not our call, it's just the way that it is legally. So it'd be good to get that clarified. Um, for all of us, be a good refresher, too.
Yep. Yep, I agree, councilmember Hanford. Um, it's always been our, it's always been our, the advice that we've received that if you have a. If you need to recuse yourself, you're not in the room for the conversation. The appearance of fairness doctrine, as I understand it, is that if you're in the room during the conversation. You recuse yourself from the vote because of a potential conflict. You were there to sway the opinion of the council. And that could create an, at least an appearance issue when it comes time for the vote. Um, but we can certainly get some more clarification from our attorney. All right. Um, and then, uh, councilmember Scarborough, anything further? And then we're going to proceed with the rest of the presentation.
Uh, I'd like to hear what Zach has to say. And if that's, if that's the rule to go by, I'm happy with that. I just. Was asking, I guess, if that's the rule. So whatever Zach says is golden.
All right. Thank you very much, councilmember Scarborough. Uh, so this will be referred to the Legislative Committee for further discussion. I really appreciate everybody's thoughts on this. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Wykoff, please continue and thank you for, for, um, allowing us to take this journey as a council and mayor this evening.
Of course, thank you. Um, okay, so I am going to move on out of voting language. Um, there's also, also this beautiful thing called the non-objection vote. Um. And a lot of jurisdictions are kind of moving this way to streamline meetings rather than have a, um, motion second. And vote on every single item. Excuse me. Um, we do use them, uh, right now for excusing absences. The mayor will say, you know, if there are no objections, councilmember, uh, Foltzer is excused. That kind of, uh, is one example. Um, one proposal is to use a non-objection vote for adjourning the meeting. Um, what, I've seen it, uh, basically, there's with no further business on the agenda. If there are no objections, this meeting will be adjourned. And then just kind of keep it open. Uh, you know, do a pause so that council can say, wait, I want to talk about something else. Um, otherwise, the meeting is considered adjourned at that point. Um. One idea and, um. Um, one idea, and um, this would be something that could be discussed in legislative affairs. When we review uh, procedures, would maybe we wanna think about approving the consent agenda with a non-objection. Um, that's, that's one of those items where everything is approved in one fell motion, so perhaps that would be. Appropriate uh, use of that. Um, also, when the mayor provides direction to staff, so the mayor could say, if there's not any objections. I will just, you know, direct staff to pill, fill the potholes, and then just leave a pause. Seeing no objections, I will direct staff to fill the potholes. So that kind of, um, at, that kind of non-objection, rather than making council do a motion and a vote to direct staff to fill the potholes. Uh, go ahead.
Before we move out of that, are there any, are there any uh, concerns about any of that? Again, this is in lieu of voting, so motion, a second, deliberation, all in favor, all opposed, abstentions doesn't need to occur. Councilmember Hanford?
I, I just think uh, that, yeah, let's talk about it at the Legislative Affairs Committee. All these different ideas, and then we can bring it uh, to council.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Fulter?
Yeah, I can see the merits of um, moving things along, especially with the consent agenda, doing the, without objection thing. But um, as Councilmember Hanford said, we look forward to discussing it in Legislative Affairs. Um, I like the ideas, though.
Perfect, thank you. Please continue, Ms. Wykoff.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, really quickly, I, um, in the packet, I included. Um, a virtual meetings guidelines, uh, document that I created a while back. Um, and, um, pretty common sense stuff, I guess you could say. Mute when you're not speaking, including with the Pledge of Allegiance, unless you, of course, you're the one leaving the pledge. Um, if there is background noise and you um, are wearing headphones. You may not realize that there's a dog barking in the background, so I have been known to mute people. To uh, help keep the meeting going without that distraction. So, I guess I will say, don't be surprised if you uh, find yourself on mute and didn't realize it. Um, or didn't do it yourself, it might have been me. Um, we, we already know this, raise your virtual hand to be recognized. Um, and keep your video on as much as you can. Any question, comments on that section?
Questions or comments? Nope, please continue, thank you.
Thank you. Um, councilmember reports is in your rules of procedure under five point one point twelve. Um, make sure that they include committee and regional meetings, um, that were attended or will be, uh, you will be attending. Um, activities in which you have participated. Um, you can also include communications, uh, that you've had with residents, businesses, and, and the sort, so. And Councilmember Fulter, that's a really cute kitten. That's not under the virtual meeting guideline, but anytime you can share, you know, your kitten or puppy, um. Mayor, may I continue, sorry? Uh, public hearing process, so your rules of procedure actually dictate that the chair will close the hearing. Um, there's no mention of a council vote, or um, to close the public testimony section of the meeting. Of the hearing, or to close the hearing, so that can all be streamlined. Um, with the mayor asking the question, you know, is there any other comments from council? Seeing none, this public hearing is now closed. It's, you guys are, are practicing to, you know, current practices that you do close the public test- testimony, and then the public hearing. Um, and council gets to choose whether or not they wanna continue doing that, or go with what the rules of procedure currently state. Or update the rules of procedure to uh, follow what current practices. Um, I don't know, Mayor, if you'd like to have a conversation on that now, or just, again, bring it to the Legislative Affairs Committee.
Any comments on that? I don't sense that that's an item of, of much concern, so Legislative Committee, thank you.
Got it. And then that just brings us to the potential edits to the rules of procedure. Um, right now, I did review them when I very first started, made some rough handwritten notes. My intent is to go through with a fine-tooth comb and put my two cents in where I think it needs, you know, we could look at it. Um, with some, maybe some suggestions on things that I've seen in my, in my career, and. Um, and then otherwise, just making sure that they're very clear to you and to staff. Um, to the mayor on how you want your meetings to, to flow and, and be conducted. Um, and again, like we've been saying all along, this will be going to the Legislative Affairs Committee at some point in twenty twenty-two. I'm not sure what their work plan looks like, so I don't know exactly when that is, but my recommendation would be to, um. If you, if you're ever perusing your rules of procedure, or you um, have something during a meeting that's like, you know, maybe we could change that. Or we should look at our rules of procedure on that, let me know, um, let your Legislative Affairs Committee know. Um, and, you know, we can, we can take a look at those items. Um, if you, if the mayor would like to entertain any comments now of anybody who knows for sure, something that they, you know, desperately wanna have. Uh, reviewed during that uh, process, you know, we can talk about it now, or we can just uh, wait until a later time. And have you email us your suggestions.
Okay, are there any, are there any thoughts or comments beyond what has already been said this evening? Alright, and, and just to be clear, even though we've discussed some of these things, uh, these changes, unless there were a motion, a second, and a. All in favor tonight, there would not be a, a change right now, so. Um, like, for right now, I'm just gonna say all in favor, I'm just gonna leave it at that. If you wanna say yes, or approve, or, or yet, or I, whatever it is, uh, that's up to you, uh, because of how we separated out. It's, it's clear, all in favor, and then there's a word you say, all opposed, there's a word you say. Um, and at this point in time, I will still be calling for any abstentions. Um, and uh, so nothing, nothing changes at this point in time. I do appreciate all the conversation on this, I'll ask one more time, is there, uh, is there anybody that uh, has any comments? That, uh, to take back to the Legislative Committee, or anything else at this time? Alright, Ms. Wykoff, thank you very much for taking us through this, I really appreciate it, and um. We do have a need now for an executive session for five hours.
Oh, I was like, no, we don't.
Executive session has been pulled, we don't need it tonight, uh, so, and I would now entertain a motion for adjournment. Councilmember Hanford?
I moved to adjourn.
Scarborough, second.
I appreciate that, thank you. Scarborough, that was good. Second from, uh, motion to adjourn from Councilmember Hanford, second from Councilmember Scarborough. Any discussion on this, on the motion, seeing none, we'll move to vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye, yes.
I said aye, didn't I? All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes, seven, six, zero, thanks, everybody, have a great evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, have a great night, thank you.